Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the November 15th work session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to welcome everybody. We have quite a few items on the agenda tonight, and we'll get through them as expeditiously as we can, giving them all proper consideration. First up on the agenda is an ordinance to accept ESG-CV2 funds for rapid rental assistance and case manager position from Christine Chestnut, Housing and Business Manager. Good afternoon, Christine.
So, we've received an award through the Emergency Solution Grant through the CARES Act to purchase, well, to provide funding for a third case manager to help Joe and I with the ever-increasing amount of homeless that we are having, and as well as some rapid rehousing dollars. And rapid rehousing is money that is used to expeditiously get people out of homelessness and into housing. So, it's normally a short-term, first-month-run security deposit kind of a thing, but currently they're allowing us to pay up to one year's rent to kind of get landlords to work with us with that funding. So, that's what the, this dollar amount, that's what it'll cover.
Questions or comments? This is good.
It is.
Good news. Heaven knows we need it. And when will that person start?
So, once it goes through two readings of council, of course. So, we're hoping by January.
Good. Okay. We have consensus to move it forward?
Sure.
Okay. Mrs. Nichols? Thank you, Christine. Next up, we have a budget amendment, HVAC replacement at WWTP Controller Building on the Water Works. And Director Corey Cameron is here. I haven't seen you in a while, Corey. How are you?
Good. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the wastewater treatment plant receives a grant from MDE, an operations and maintenance grant that we've received the last couple of years. So, now that the plant is doing everything it's supposed to do. We received a grant this year of $440,000, which is up from last year, where it was like $250,000. So, we have a couple, typically that goes in and we use it for the following year CIP, for maintenance things at the plant. We've identified a couple urgent needs, so we wanted to move it forward and drop it into some project accounts now. One was the HVAC, which we put out the bid, and it came in $100,500 over what we expected. We had $90,000, so we needed another $100,000 to put in there. The other urgent need is the electricity at the wastewater plant. In the last couple of years, I've noticed a couple things that keep going wrong over there with our electricity, and so we did an electrical evaluation with an engineering firm, and we've identified quite a few urgent needs over there. So, I wanted to go ahead and move $180,000 of this into a project account and get the engineering side of the electrical upgrades done, and then in the CIP next year, we can move forward with the rest of the work. There'll be an additional $159,000 left on the grant, and we figure we would put that towards the electrical work that needs to be done at the plant. There's a lot of old at the plant tied in with the new, so not everything at the plant is new, and electricity crosses over, and it's caused us some complete power failures in the last year.
Okay.
So, I want to get this taken care of.
Questions? You brought up the point, there is nothing on the new side that's gone, it's just the interconnection between the two.
Yes.
And then will that take care of the entire plant?
I sure hope.
Under this? Okay.
For electricity, yes.
Okay. For electricity.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no other questions, we have consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Corey?
Thank you.
Put it on the agenda, please. Next, we have an ordinance to accept Target grant. I don't see the Colonel, but I do see the Chief. Good to see you.
Good afternoon. It's good to be seen. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. We had applied for, this past spring, a grant through the U.S. Congress of Mayors and Target Corporation. We had gotten this information on this grant from our mayor, who was deployed at the time, and we decided to make application for $75,000 to establish a co-responder model here in the city of Salisbury, which would involve a police and social worker responding out to mental health calls, related calls for service. The $75,000 would go into formulation of a group to set up the program, acquire training for the program, and then have social workers respond out to calls of service with police officers, document this process, and at the end of the grant period, then present a report to the mayor for consideration, see how we're going to move forward as a city from that point.
Questions?
This is a good thing.
I'm constantly amazed at our departments and their ability to find grants. If not, the citizens would be yelling and screaming about tax increases, but you guys have done a great job, not just you, but Amanda, you go right down the line, Chief Toll, and it's really, really good to hear. And Angel is a little blown under the weather, but I will tell you that she appreciates it probably as much as anybody else. So, thank you very much for doing that.
Absolutely. Just like to, one slight correction. Actually, even though we have the finest detective division around, we actually didn't find this grant. Our mayor did while he was overseas. I have to...
Weren't you supposed to be watching the country or something?
Occasionally.
He did this at lunchtime.
Go across the Atlantic.
You were watching out for Salisbury.
Always.
Love it. Love it.
Hey, Mr. President, if I could, real quick?
Certainly.
I just want to note, you know, we've shared this publicly, but, and I was just looking back at the letter from Tom Cochrane, the CEO of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, in his letter to us, just saying how it's their great pleasure to select Salisbury as the winner, and through the generous support of Target, our partner in this award program, you'll soon receive the payment in the amount of $75,000. Now, of course, once the council accepts that, which our panel of judges selected from among all small-city applicants, those with populations under 100,000 for this recognition, and that there were two others selected, one at the 100,000 to 1 million range, that was Albuquerque, New Mexico, and then one at the million-plus range, Dallas, Texas.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Nichols? We have consensus. Thank you. Next up, we have our building official, Bill Holland, Safford Kia Annexation Introduction. Good afternoon, Bill. Can you introduce our guests?
Sure. I have James Graham, he's owner of Safford Kia.
Good evening.
And Ed Taylor.
James Smith.
James Smith, I get it right.
Hi, James.
With AWB Engineers. And just to go over this really quickly, recently, the city received petition for annexation from Safford Kia to annex a two-and-a-half-acre site, it's on Route 13 North, it's contiguous to the city corporate limits, just north of CarMax dealership. The petitioner is proposing to construct a new Kia automotive dealership, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Graham. He has a few renderings here and can probably explain more what he wants to do.
Yeah, great. Thank you for taking the time. So, this is a proposed exterior elevation of what the store, there's an existing Kia store next door, and the manufacturer has rendered it obsolete. So, we decided, rather than just rebuilding that location, that we would move it next door, try to get it on water and sewer, and make it state-of-the-art, which is what they want, and which is what we want, and I think it'll make the roadway look better. That would be an interior elevation as to what they would want us to do.
Very nice.
What if we annex that portion?
Super good. Any comments, James?
No, it's pretty standard. All the utilities are in place at the water and sewer, and then you just go to State Highway. We'd be tying in from the south for the city water and sewer and into the State Highway for the drainage.
Questions from the council?
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if I can, you know, I think there's a couple things to point out here. One, that there are multiple barriers to automobile dealerships being inside municipalities, and, you know, I think this is an example of working in collaboration with the company, ensuring that we can reduce those barriers to a reasonable point, and it's also an indicator, another reminder of why water and sewer is so important to development, and, you know, I hope that this is just a part of an expanded and continuing partnership with Safford. So, thank you all.
Any questions? Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We have consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
Okay.
This should be going to the Planning Commission December 16th for rezoning.
Okay. I'll see you there.
Bill, what's the current zoning? Do you know? Sorry.
I did not have that.
That's okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
We have another one. Mr. Holland, Beaver Run Drive Annexation Agreement.
Sir, this is coming back to you so you could see the annexation agreement, impact statement. Last time I was here, it was, I had the council's blessing to take it to the Planning Commission and got rezoned as mixed-use, non-residential. This will allow for it to be developed and connected to city utilities. Prior to issuance to any of the permits, as part of the annexation agreement, the Pintex is required to pay a fee of, it's a development assessment fee of $24,150. This development assessment fee is used for purposes of beautification, restoration, revitalization of improvements to existing neighborhoods within the city's corporate limits. Under the physical impact statement, once fully developed, the sets value be approximately $1.4 million, with expected revenue estimate to be about $13,700 with a net physical impact of 10, positive impact of $10,464. And the next step would be to move this for the introduction of the resolutions at regular council meeting, and I'll forward everything to the state and into county.
Questions or comments? April?
No.
Michelle? Mr. Mayor, any comments?
Again, another positive indicator.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So, we have consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Nichols? Thank you, Mr. Holland. Next, we have Infrastructure and Development Director Amanda Pollak to discuss Summersgate Annexation Agreement.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We came before you at a work session in August to talk about Summersgate, and if you'll recall, they were annexed under a much older style of the agreement, and one of the requirements in their annexation agreement was to relocate a 750-foot portion of Johnson's Road. And we had done research and could not determine, you know, where that requirement came from, and it was not a requirement that State Highway had put on the city. So, we were looking to restate the annexation agreement. So, what you have in your package is the resolution and amended annexation agreement that puts it in the current terms of what our typical annexation agreements look like. So, specifically, this includes the development assessment for reinvestment in existing neighborhoods in the value of approximately $241,000. So, that's more typical for what we see for annexation agreements than relocating a portion of a road. I do have Greg Stevens from Vantage Point is on the Zoom, if you have any questions for him.
Okay.
And I did want to mention one more thing after we discussed the agreement. If this goes forward, the road relocation had already been dedicated to the city. So, if this amendment is approved, we would come back to you to abandon that right-of-way since we would no longer need the relocated portion of Johnson Road. And as it turns out, State Highway is in the process of putting a traffic signal at Robbins Avenue and Snow Hill Road, so the relocation would have tied into that as a fourth leg, and it is something that Summersgate is looking to actually build that fourth leg to come into their development. So, we would be coming back to abandon that right-of-way so that they have the ability to have that be an entrance into the commercial piece of their development. So, that would be a future step once all this is done. So, I wanted to turn it over to Michael to talk about the agreement.
Okay. First off, since its inclusion in the packet, the resubdivision plat, which is the plat describing that property, which is subject to the amended and restated annexation agreement, has been updated. The updates are minimal, and truth be told, to the naked eye, are difficult to decipher. It's effectively the same lot reconfiguration that is shown on the plat attached to the documents in today's packet. Moreover, this amended restated annexation agreement follows the method that was applied for purposes of the amended and restated annexation agreement that was approved for that property owned by Faith Baptist in June of this year. Specifically, the development assessment mentioned by Ms. Pollak, the $241,069 figure, is broken down into four different components. Specifically, the owner of the property is required to make payment of one quarter of that development assessment within 12 months of the agreement's execution. Thereafter, one quarter of the development assessment can be waived, depending upon whether or not the developer meets certain development milestones with respect to the development of that property. This being exactly the kind of methodology applied for Faith Baptist, effectively encouraging the development of that property so as to not only bring it on to the tax rolls and improve status, but moreover, to generate the highest and most efficient use of that property as expeditiously as possible. Other than that, this agreement is, once again, a reflection of the same styled agreement that was approved for Faith Baptist and is something that the developer has assured the city as something that can provide a pathway for the actual development of this property, which has, for the most part, remained stagnant in terms of development for now over a decade. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any particular questions you might have with regard to the terms contained in the agreement. Otherwise, I'll cede the floor back to Ms. Pollak.
So, there is a difference on here.
Yes.
Okay.
And to the extent there isn't any difference, here's what I do know. It is the plant that the developer himself identified as the plat to be used for purposes of this agreement, because following the city council's approval of this agreement and its execution by the parties, this agreement will allow for the developer to file a request for approval of resubdivision plat with the City Department of Infrastructure and Development, and following that approval, the resubdivision plat, as shown in the document that was just passed out to you, that is the first development milestone for the developer to complete for purposes of actually getting some type of development done for the property. Now, that's not something that will authorize a waiver of the development assessment under the agreement, rather, it's the first step in the process for the developer.
Gotcha. Questions or comments? You had referenced an access road. Where is that on this?
So, it would be straight across from where Robbins Avenue is shown.
All right.
Out on Snow Hill Road. Let me point you to the page here. So, let's see. So, it is, on the very front page, it's in the upper left-hand side where it says, "Proposed relocated..."
Oh, I see it.
So, sorry, actually, you don't see Robbins Avenue on here.
No.
That was not helpful.
Okay.
I was getting ready to say.
But that spur of the relocated road is what would be abandoned.
Gotcha.
Yes.
While you're looking at the plat, I'll make a specific point to mention that this agreement governs parcel G and parcel J specifically. Parcel G is roughly, the entire property that's subject to this agreement is 26.76 acres. Parcel J is 2.65 acres. There are no plans for future development of that parcel at this very moment. Instead, the plans for future development relate exclusively to parcel G, as shown on the first page of the plat, and that parcel is roughly 24.11 acres in size. That is the parcel that conditions the waiver of the development assessment under Section 8 of the annexation agreement, not parcel J.
Okay. Okay, I think I got it. And then this will go to the fire department, obviously, during the process.
Oh, yes, absolutely. For the review, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Mayor, any comments?
No.
Okay.
Fully support.
All right. We have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Nichols? Thank you, Mrs. Pollak. And we have another. Budget amendment to accept Transportation Alternatives Programs grant, MDOT, and just check, the mayor didn't find this one, did he?
No. No, no. Actually, we have Will White, our transportation project specialist, to thank for this one.
Good. Tell Will thank you.
I will. So, this is a grant that we were recently awarded from the Maryland Department of Transportation, and it's through the Transportation Alternatives Program, and this is a grant to design approximately 8.9 miles of bike lanes on city streets. So, we decided to apply for a grant to really complete the Bicycle Master Plan and get all of these roads designed so that then we can start applying for construction grants. And in the past, we've really been applying piecemeal. We'll apply one road at a time, maybe design, maybe construction, maybe both. So, this was, you know, we decided to try something different, and we were awarded this grant. We're really thrilled. So, of the 8.9 miles of road, it's actually 15 different streets, it's six intersections controlled by the city, and three intersections that are controlled by State Highway. So, this is a really large scope. I could list all the streets if you want, but it really covers a lot of town, and again, this is to implement the Bicycle Master Plan. So, the total amount of the grant is $597,024, and that is 80% of the design costs. So, we had estimated the total project cost being $746,280, which means that the city is providing a grant match in the amount of $149,256,000, and this is coming out of the FY22 Bicycle Master Plan account. So, we have the grant match available in this year's budget. We actually had our kickoff meeting today with the TAP program staff, and this will be an RFP. We will have to select a vendor. You know, this is a large amount, so we cannot use one of the vendors that we have on call. So, we'll be working with the MDOT folks to make sure that we have everything we need in our RFP package, and they do select based off of qualifications, and then we'll be able to negotiate a price with the most qualified firms. So, we were pleased to hear that. So, this is the budget amendment to accept the grant and authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement and provide the funding in an account for us.
Questions?
Yeah, this is really great that we can...
It is. Is one of those streets South Boulevard?
Actually, South is getting done now, so no, South is designed.
Okay. Because I went down there the other day, and when I got, by the time I got home, I got three phone calls.
Yes.
What is that?
Yes, so South is being striped now.
Right.
There's no loss of parking.
Right.
I want to be clear on that because I've gotten a few questions. Obviously, if we were going to lose parking...
I have to.
You all would have had to have made that decision, and we did not lose parking, but South will be striped here shortly. We're just waiting for good temperatures, but it just had the micro-surfacing, and now it'll be striped.
And a circle piece?
Yes. Yes, so that is going to be striped, and then there will be some delineators to keep people moving around that circle, but that is to calm traffic at that wide intersection.
And that was my answer, because that can be a very fast street.
Exactly. Yes, at Riverside Road and South Boulevard.
Yeah.
Also had multiple accidents at that location, including one very severe.
And one of the children who lives on that corner was almost hit. So, it's good. I'm glad, I'm glad that, I thought that's what it was, but I wasn't sure.
Yes, it is.
Okay. If there's no other questions, do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you. One more. It's the Amanda Pollak Show. Resolution to authorize an agreement with Delmarva Power for the location of a gateway sign.
Yeah, we're all over the place tonight with that.
You got everything going. It's okay. That's good.
Yes.
Breaking out the greatest hits.
That's right. So, this is an interesting one. So, we had designed a few years ago some new gateway signs that are large SBY letters to sort of replicate the LAX, if you've ever flown into Los Angeles Airport. So, we've had the design done, and we've been looking for where to put them and looking for property owners that would give us space to put the signs. So, we have our location coming into the north end of town. Delmarva Power is granting us a license agreement to be able to put them on the property that's at Neller Mill Road and Route 13, and right now, there is a small brick sign that says, "Welcome to Salisbury," and there's two trees overgrowing the sign next to them. So, your exhibit shows those trees and that sign and the area that we would need for the license agreement, which is actually quite similar to the footprint of the existing sign. So, once the agreement is approved, we will be putting out the bid for those signs in that location, and it's eight-foot-tall illuminated letters that are SBY.
Nice.
Yeah.
Very nice. I'm not sure John Allen had anything to do with it before he retired, but that was, that's really good. And how many years, you said?
How many, I'm sorry.
How many years?
Oh, we did the design, I think, three or so years ago.
At least.
At least. Three or four years ago.
At least three.
It's not longer than that. It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a struggle finding properties. We've been working with a few different folks, but this is the first one that's come through for us.
Fantastic. We have to get one on the south.
Yes, we're trying to get north-southeast ones, so...
Four were funded, so whether or not we can pull all four off with the funds appropriated, given that things change, and, you know, it's, but the biggest challenge has been, we have shifted back and forth from SGA, SGA, SHA right-of-way or private property and working out an easement like this, and SHA has resisted any sort of, you know, design that represents our branding, and private property is just difficult to find a spot where somebody wants to agree to an easement and put a sign on their property. That's not their business, a sign or something.
When you're coming in on 50, there's one there that's got all the signs of all the organizations.
Fnatic Coke.
Oh, there's the small, yeah, on State Highway property, there is the...
There's some there, too. I mean, now...
The Chamber of Commerce sign, yeah.
So, are we able to work with them to...
Replace that?
Yeah.
We could. You know, that's a different animal, because it's all those civic organizations and...
Yeah.
Now, one thing I've noticed is the lighting has been off for a while now, so it'd be nice if the state could repair that or if the Chamber of Commerce could.
Just give it a fresh look.
Yeah, and it's missing the city, it's got the incorrect city seal.
What about the DMC? Is that little area where the McDonald's used to be?
Well, we could. That's way in town. The idea is that these are at the edges, so gateway signs, so this is before you enter the city, ideally. Now, obviously, the one to the north is still deeply into the city.
Right.
Before you enter the city.
Yeah, but ideally, you want these things at the edges, so they're welcoming signs. You know, three of the four have been taken down. So we used to have the gateway signs, that, they were the wooden ones. Now, one is still remaining on the west side. That will come down eventually, but there's no need for it to come down right now until we replace it.
Right.
Well, see why they wouldn't, on the corner, is it Nanticoke Road?
Nanticoke.
Yeah, Nanticoke Road.
That they wouldn't.
Well, we'd have to tear down what's there to put, because this is, this would be bigger than what's there, much bigger.
We'd find some resistance, and I can understand why.
And it's state highway property, and so far, state highway has not, has said they will not allow these signs on their property.
They have strict sign guidelines, so that it's consistent throughout the state, and this type of sign doesn't conform with their sign guidelines.
Yeah.
Too bright and colorful for them.
Well, we could tell them that we ordered SHA and it came in SBY.
It made a mistake.
Minor, minor error. Okay.
They don't want to hear that.
Do we have consensus agreement? Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Now you're finished. Next up, we have an ordinance to adopt new police pay scale, and the mayor's going to handle this one.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Let's see here, okay. As part of the March 2020 trust rebuilding plan, we announced nine steps that we were going to take to address fallout, as, and, you know, not mincing words, from the theft from our property room. And in the wake of even announcing that, things have gotten even more challenging for our relationship between the police and the people who rely on and fund our police department, as well as all other city services. So the part of that has been an effort to improve recruitment and retention. What we've seen in neighboring communities, in some cases, is that certain police services have either been suspended, halted, or hours cut, and other agencies, such as Sheriff's Office and Maryland State Police, have to be relied on. So we obviously don't want that to happen here. We want to, we want trust to continue to be the foundation of the police department. And I believe that part of that is improving our retention efforts and ultimately our recruitment efforts. So the budget amendment before you is to implement a mid-year raise for all officers of the Salisbury Police Department. The raises range from 4% to 8.7%. Everyone is receiving 4%, and those who have been with the department for more than, for nine or more years are receiving a greater than 4% increase. So it's essentially an adjustment to the pay plan, and that's why we're here. So we have the funds already in the salary line, so we could have just done a budget transfer. But the reason why we're here tonight is to adopt the pay plan. So it's a 4% increase in the pay, which also helps us on the starting salary. So it means that starting salary is increased and also means that the salary, the wages for new people brought in will be increased. You probably also heard, and this is something that we do have funds for currently, that we were increasing the, or we were offering a lateral bonus of $25,000. So help on the way in and help once you get there. That's the intent.
Okay. The total impact on an annual basis is what number?
Give me one second. The total impact on an annual basis is $387,656 plus the, plus the impact of LEOPS. So I'd have to calculate what the LEOPS impact, so 30%. So for example, the cash, the wages, I shouldn't say cash, but the wages impact on this year is about $224,000, and with LEOPS, that increases to $292,000. So just, I have $300,000. So that would be, you know, in the neighborhood of less than double that. So less than $600,000 next year. In other words, this is not easy to do, but it's important to do.
Chief, could we ask you a question? Please, if you don't mind coming up. I believe I'm correct to say, since I've been on the council, we have never been at full strength.
You are correct, sir.
And I know, because there's, I always, we always discuss this at the budget meetings, and this should help, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. What is our, what, see, this is a tough question, because COVID is a different, is an additional thing. What's our average turnover? Do you have, you know offhand? If you don't, you can get it to us, but...
Well, I can get you the exact numbers, but annually, minus COVID, I would say, it's probably safe to say four per year.
Four per year.
But I can get you the exact figure.
And one of the things that we struggle on, this is my opinion and several other people's opinion, but one of the reasons that, you know, we train them, we get them ready, and then they move on to where they can go and sit in a car and go on eight calls, nine calls a day, and/or shift. And our guys are working their tails off multiple calls. The number of calls we had last year is, how many, calls for service, roughly?
I think it was approximately 50,000 calls for service.
50,000. God bless them.
If I may, Mr. President, you know, so one of the, one of the fact, we'll zoom out just a little bit. You're painting an important picture here, and there's even more to it. We take people, offer them a great career, you know, long career pay predictability plan. You can expect a raise every single year. This council has included that in the budget for every year that you've sat here. I mean, it's been, we're coming up on the ninth year of raises for, or we're at the ninth year of raises for city staff. And that's 2% to 2.25%. You know, nobody's getting rich working for municipal government. But I think what's important to note is that's predictability, forward progress.
Right.
Plus, plus career ladders, including the changing of the rank structure for the police department. So even in that, you pair that against the challenge of, there is increasing scrutiny. There is increasing of a dynamic between the police and our citizens of, you know, ensuring that everybody's being treated fairly, you're watched closely, you can't make a mistake. And so all of those things heighten the expectations, which is a good thing. You know, cell phone recording, all of it, our body cameras, all of it heightens the expectation. So all of that in a context of a very busy agency, 12 to 13 calls per shift, when you break it down, versus two to three in some of our neighboring agencies, even large neighboring agencies, two to three calls per shift. And then you put that into the dynamic of, we have a very large patrol organization and a fairly large CID organization, which means one of those two opportunities is where you're going to spend most of your time, unless and until you reach admin. So the other facets of this proposal are a special investigations unit, which we talked about at the press conference last week, the change to our online, or the standing up of an online reporting system, which would help back some of those calls off, the things where an officer responding doesn't provide a direct benefit to resolving the investigation, such as shoplifting without a suspect being present, something where a professional could enter that information and say, "Here's what we know", and then there could be follow-up after the fact. All of those things will help lessen the burden. And on top of that, I think the compensation piece shows that those who have invested the time and have stuck with the agency and who we don't want to lose to one of those neighboring, you know, slower organizations puts us in a slightly better position.
Yeah, and then we just, the target grant that we just put on with the caseworker should help as well. So any other questions or comments?
No, I think what we're doing here is addressing the issues that we know that we're facing and that we're going to face. Staffing law enforcement in this day and age in any municipality, county, or state is tough. It's tough to find people who want that career path. So I think this is a good thing. It makes it more attractive. I mean, if you want to come and work and do good work, Salisbury's the one place to do it. So I'm in support of this.
We have consensus?
Yes.
Chief, thank you very much. Mrs. Nichols, may I put that on the agenda, please? Next up, we have Marina Landing amended and restated LDA. Mr. Mayor, you're on the list.
Hello. I'll wait till the people know better than I know arrive at the table.
Hi, Keith.
But yeah, let me introduce this just by saying, RFP 09-16 was, and Jennifer, I don't know if you want to come up for this, or you may... Or Amanda? Yeah, if you don't mind. Sure. RFP 09-16, and just stop me if I get any of this wrong, was issued 12/29/2015. And so we've been working at this for a while. You know, significantly, we tore up and rebuilt the street in front of the Marina, which delayed things, not to mention COVID. But, you know, we've been working through the steps for a long time. And this is a complicated agreement, because we have an active Marina that was part of that RFP. You know, this hands over an active Marina to the new owner, plus a mixed-use development. So it's a complicated process. That developer also partnered with us and shifted the pump station from one side of the street to the other at their expense. So we're grateful for the partnership, and I think we're finally at an LDA that we, I know we're at, an LDA that we agree on. So I'll introduce John Custis and Keith Fisher, and you know Amanda Pollak.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, and council members. John Custis with Long Badger and Scheller represent the developer and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Our mayor did a wonderful job in giving a synopsis of where we are. We obviously, I can't stand here and say that things have gone smoothly and things have gone quickly, because we've been at this for quite a while. But I will say that if there's a silver lining in a global pandemic, it allows us all to take a look in the mirror, figure out what we can do better, and this was a perfect example. And with the leadership of Mr. Mayor and Mr. Sullivan and his team, I have to say that we have gotten through a lot of the major issues. We are very excited about where we are. We are happy to answer any questions about the amended and restated LDA. But it is a simpler version of what we have been working with. It does solve a lot of the issues that were hurdles from a financing standpoint, from a construction standpoint, things, and it addresses things that this council has also adopted, like the Horizon Tax Credit Program. So we are all very excited to move forward with it. We thank you for the opportunity. We do thank your team as well, because our folks are ready to move. As Mr. Mayor said, they have purchased a lot, donated it to the city, worked with the city to move the pump station, and they are ready to get a shovel on the ground early next spring if this is adopted by the council. So we do appreciate that.
Amanda?
Just wanted to point out that the agreement does set some deadlines for site plan approval and building permit approval, so that is, has been updated. And then, as Mr. Custis noted, this is eligible for Horizon and for the Here's Home incentive program, as well as potentially receiving soil from the treatment plant and the Riverwalk reimbursement program. So we've had a kickoff meeting with Keith and his team, and we've gone through all the technical aspects and all the incentive programs. So this is really the first step. And then, once this LDA is approved, we'll get started on everything else, and you will see them back again in a month or so with all of the other programs that they would be eligible for.
That's what we like to hear. That's why we did the programs. I mean, this is the, this is the purpose.
Yeah, this is the second. The renderings look a little different, am I right? The building itself?
More than likely, yes. We, the main buildings, the two towers that were previously conceived with the amount of apartments in there.
Right.
We went back and, given the current market conditions and all that's going on now, the developers have added more apartments to the boathouse to increase the opportunity for this particular project. So as Amanda stated, we're going to come back through the process and submit that next level density. But, but yeah, those are, that's what the developer's intent is.
Then we'll go to the planning commission, you know?
Yes.
If you're talking about breaking ground, this has got to be...
It will go back through Planning Commission, and whether it's December or January, I don't think that'll be their critical path, because we're going to keep moving through design, walking back through Planning Commission. And then it's important to note, they do not need to go to Board of Zoning Appeals, because now the property that they will own will include the parking lot, so it's a larger area. So it's actually less dense than if they were just owning the parcels of land with the building. So that's a good thing. They had gotten a lot of the environmental permits through the state and FEMA already. So those were some of the long, you know, critical path permits, and those have already been obtained. So we're in a good place, knowing how to move forward.
I'm glad to hear about more housing.
At one point, at one point, the city was going to retain ownership of the parking lot. And that's, if you recall, we extended the parking district down that way. And then we later changed our parking regulations. So it made all of that unnecessary. But this simplifies it, and as Amanda said, it's one lot now. The land side is one lot instead of being broken up into three or four or five, right? Yeah. And the other thing that I think is worth noting is the, the structure of the agreement that Michael, that Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Custis worked on is sort of the model you can expect to see moving forward. So it'll, they'll look more like this than previous versions of the LDAs. So in other projects that involve city land.
Fantastic. Looks beautiful.
How many units are you expecting to have in there now?
76.
76, there you go.
Will there be any affordable in there?
Not anything specific, but market rate affordable is how I guess about the rest. Two or 10 to 12,000 is where a retail office is under that one.
So that's about the same as it was?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions, Michelle? All right. I have no more.
I do. What is supposedly your market rate going to be? Have you, do you have any idea?
As the architect, I don't know.
Oh, you're the architect, okay, okay.
If you ask me what color it is, I can tell you.
What color is it?
And I do think it's worth noting that that's what the city sought and received back five years ago was a market rate apartment development. Whereas, for example, over on Lot 30 around the corner, we saw it, affordable housing. And we have all affordable units coming there.
I will say that this same developer is completing their fourth building in Seaford, and they're at 100% occupancy in Seaford, which I think they have a good feel for what the market is.
Okay, do we have consensus? Yes, Mr. Sullivan has a...
To piggyback off what the mayor said in terms of this, providing the fundamental model for the amended and restated LDAs moving forward, the quintessential component that was identified as being a hurdle for all developers and getting their projects off the ground had to do with taking title to the property. So effectively, title gets conveyed early on, but those development milestones are no longer conditioned upon... conveyed early on, but those development milestones are no longer conditioned upon right of reversion, because effectively, any financing institution was saying that that was, there was no way they could actually lend on the project if that right of reversion existed. So instead, failure to meet the development milestones results in a financial penalty that requires payment from the developer in exchange for, or not in exchange, but by virtue of their late performance of those development milestones.
I'm glad to see it moving. I'm sure you are, too.
Sir.
So, we have consensus to move it forward?
Yes, sir.
Consensus? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Nichols?
Very much.
Yep. Well, I think that concludes all the items on the agenda. We will be going into closed session, but before we do that, we have any comments for the good of the order, Mr. Mayor?
No, full, full agenda. You know, I think just taking stock of what, you know, you accomplished in an hour, funding a second, a third homelessness reduction staff manager, plus more funding for housing the homeless, fixing a major issue at the wastewater treatment plant, accepting money to provide mental health services in line with our police department, funding raises for our police officers, multiple annexations, multiple housing developments. I mean, bike lanes across the city, designed across the city. It's just impressive stuff. So, thank you.
I can assure you, it took us a lot longer preparing those documents.
That's, that's why you get paid the big bucks.
You knew that was coming, Mike.
Okay. Mr. Boda?
You know, just to piggyback off the, what the mayor said, I mean, you know, we are actively addressing major issues in our city right now. And, and we literally touched on every single one tonight. So just, I commend the council members for doing that and look forward to finishing this through the next meetings and then starting to see shovels in the ground and building one up. So really excited about the, the time that we are living in our city right now.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. April?
I concur with what the mayor, Mayor Habo said. We are really moving Salisbury forward. And I'm very proud of Salisbury and the leadership that we have here. But I also want to say another thing. Jack and Angela will be very proud of us, because the VFW Post 10159 is hosting December the 8th A blood drive. So if anybody wants to donate their blood, please do so. It'll be from, I think, 10 to 5 December the 8th. So come to the VFW, West Main Street, 821 West Main Street, Salisbury, Maryland, as there is a need. And when I spoke to the gentleman in reference to this, there's a great need for blood. I'm sorry, I can't donate, but I'm pushing it myself. So those who can, please come.
Thank you, April. I agree. Michelle?
Um, go get your booster shot. It's, it's so easy to get an appointment on, on the, the Health Department's website. Get on there, get your booster shot lined up. You don't have to get the same. My husband got his this morning. I'm sure he's going to be kind of grouchy tomorrow with a sore arm, but it's worth it. So please go get your booster.
I, I will even say, a lot of the pharmacies around town, I got mine last night at work on lunch, my arm sore, but that's it. I mean, a lot of places around town, you just wait about 30 minutes and you're done.
And I'm taking my granddaughter, she's eight years old, to get her first COVID shot tomorrow.
I heard on the news just before we left that there was, had been a million children that had been vaccinated, which is excellent. Okay. I, I do what, what the mayor has said, all of you have said. Just to reiterate, though, there is a serious, can you hear me? Okay. There is a serious shortage of blood right now, or back down, I believe, to a less than a day's supply. So if you can give blood, please consider it. At this time, thank you all for attending, those who have. On November 15th, 2021, at 4:30 PM, the Salisbury City Council will convene in the regularly scheduled work session. At approximately 6:10 PM upon adjournment of the meeting, council will entertain vote to convene in closed session to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or, or proposal. If public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding propos, or proposal process in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland 3-305B14. So I need a motion now, please, to enter into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda made the motion. Ms. Jackson made the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are in closed session by a vote of four and one abstent, one absent. And the time right now is 5:26 PM. Okay. We have just come out of closed session, and the purpose of the closed session was to discuss a proposal. With that, have a good evening, everyone. We are adjourned.